Yeah.
No.
Are you ready?
I can't. You gotta watch.
Oh, almost ready.
Almost ready. So, you ready?
Not yet. Ready?
Okay. Yeah. Welcome. Today's September 13, 2022, meeting of the Town and Victor Planning Board. We'll start the meeting with the pledge of the flag.
We pledge to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which this is a nation, God, that is all, that is just.
We start. I have some announcements. Emergency exits are to the left and right. Restrooms are out the entrance door and to the left. Be sure to sign the attendance sheet at the back of the meeting room, even if you are a developer or are presenting an application. There are business cards at the back table next to the sign-in sheet to take with you, with the email address and phone number for the planning department. Also in the back table is a copy of the resolutions that will be read tonight, along with the agenda. And the agenda's up on the screen right now. Please turn off your cell phones. If you have to make a call, please take it out in the hall, and please keep it on silent. And any conversations that you have to have, please take those out in the hall as well. Do not have that in this room. This meeting is livestreamed via YouTube with text commenting available for those watching right now on YouTube, or those who might want to skip out the door and go and watch it on UFO. We have meeting minutes from August 23rd. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at them? Any problems? Okay.
What's that?
Yeah, one of Suzie's names is garbled.
Oh, okay.
Page seven. We have a motion to approve then?
Tom moved.
That Al?
Joe.
Joe? Joe moves.
I'll second.
I'll second. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting minutes are approved.
I abstain because I wasn't here.
Okay. Scott abstains. We had correspondence from Karen Mayo with regard to the brush solar array, and Amy Bartel with regard to the McGuire parking expansion. If we have no, nobody from the town board? Yeah, well. I don't see them. Okay, nobody from town board. Any other boards or committees here? No, hearing no. We will ask you to sell us what's going to happen next time, Lisa.
Your next meeting is September 27th. You have a public hearing, auction direct charging station located at 6520 State Route 96. Applicant is requesting approval to install two public charge point dual port stations, a new utility pool and conduit at the pre-existing auction direct site. Zimmer in-ground pool located at 203 Miles Cutting Lane in the Limited Development District. Applicant is requesting approval to install a 16-foot by 42-foot by 8-foot deep fiberglass pool. Crown Castle T-Mobile located at 795 Old Dutch Road. Applicant is requesting approval to replace and upgrade antennas and equipment on an existing wireless facility. Victor Square Retail Expansion and Victor Crossing Parking Expansion at Commerce Drive, requesting approval for a site plan modification with the proposed improvements for Victor Square Shopping Center with additional parking will be back on. Minor subdivision, Brawn, minor subdivision located at 7994 Parish Road. Applicant is requesting approval to subdivide 81.3 acres into two lots. Lot one will contain 5.02 acres and lot two will contain 76.2 acres. And then a preliminary subdivision, 1086 Strong Road subdivision. It has been some time since you've seen them. They're coming back. They're located at 1086 Strong Road. Applicant is requesting approval to subdivide 34.42-acre parcel into 11 single-family lots, including an existing house and garage, and then any carryovers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would note here that the legal notice for the public hearing has appeared in the Daily Messenger, along with under-review signs being posted on the subject parcels. Postcards were mailed to property owners within a minimum of 500 feet from the location for the initial public hearing date of each application. For applications carried over, please refer to the planning and building office. Our first item, this is South Gate Hills Phase Three. The public hearing on this is still open. This is 3PS 2022, East Victor Road, Zone Residential Two. The owner is BRW of Grease LLC, tax map 28.04-1-48.000. Applicant is requesting approval for a clustered subdivision of 10 single-family lots on an 11-acre parcel. This is the second step in a three-step process for a major subdivision. The sketch plan was acknowledged complete on August 10, 2021. Link?
Good evening. Link Swedrock with BME Associates. Also with me tonight is Jerry Watkins from BRW of Grease LLC. We were here at the last meeting, or two meetings ago, to discuss the preliminary subdivision application for South Gate Three. Since then, we've been working to address all the staff comments and work through planning board comments that we got from you at your last meeting, and we resubmitted revised plans and written responses to all the comments we received. So, we're here tonight just to continue with the process. A couple of comments, just so you know, last night, we were at the town board, which is what this markup is here that I got. So, we went to the town board at the request of staff to discuss the open space that, where the parking area and the trail would be to connect to the Auburn Trail. And it's a little, we just got input from the town board last night. So, I wanted to go over that with you a little bit, which maybe I can do with a pointer. So, I can talk. So, basically, the town board requested where this parking area is in the trail connection to the Auburn Trail. They asked that we make it smaller than what we were originally showing at, this whole area, including the pond. So, the town board asked that we make it as small as we, as small as we can, which is what we've done here. We've just sort of went 50 feet on this side of the parking area and drawn this area that would be offered to the town.
Link, can you, at least for the benefit of the people in the audience, show where that is?
And that's, so it's up there. So, 50 feet past the parking area. This would be dedicated to the town, and then basically, these two lots, this lot would be extended to include the pond, which was another, which was another comment from town staff that they wanted the pond on a single-family lot, which is consistent with what we did in Section One and Section Two with the drainage districts that we're doing now. So, this lot would encompass, would sort of be extended to the corner of that 50-foot, and this would be one big lot, and then this lot would be bigger here. So, those are lots. Forty-five and forty, forty-five and forty-six would become, that green would be forty-five and the, that's forty-six, I think, yeah. So, bigger lots. The lots would, just, we're not, we're not really changing anything on how the houses are designed, the driveways, any of that. We're just moving the lines along, making the lots bigger and responding to the town feedback we got about the pond being on one of the lots and the town board asking us to reduce the amount of land they wanted to take. So, from that, that's the big changes. We changed at the request of the planning board, we changed this area to an open space area instead of a conservation easement area to give these houses flexibility in the back, to allow for more room for, for mowing and maintenance and pools, but no structures, basically. The other thing with, with, we, the planning board had talked, we talked about doing a connection, trail connection down from the cul-de-sac to this pond. We actually had that on the plans, but once the town requested that, they wanted that on a private lot, we don't feel comfortable about having the trail on a private lot. So, it's been removed with the newest iteration of plans. Just, we didn't want to put a trail on somebody's lot that goes, lets everybody cut through. So, I think that's sort of what we've been working on since we were here last time, and like I said, the town board sort of had off the press. I didn't even have time to, I just marked up something to bring with me tonight. So, and with that, Jerry and I are happy to answer any questions that the board has about where we're at.
Hey, Joe, you had some questions last time?
Um, yeah, I've been sort of pivoting as Link's been going along here. So, the, on the drawing, that orange outline of the larger lot, I forget which one, it was 47, 48?
Forty-five, that's forty.
Forty-five, okay. So, lot 45. Is that the house, or is that the pond, and that's depicted next to that little driveway?
The house.
House is there, and then they're...
The house.
So, that's conservation easement, essentially?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's the pond above the, what looks like a utility easement?
So, this would still, the house would be here.
Yep.
This would slow down. This would also be.
Okay.
And this would still, the conservation easement would be.
You might want to, you're gonna have to either bring the hand mic or speak in.
I could probably take this one. But, so, yeah, the, the conservation easements, we're not really changing. We're just moving the lot lines around and keeping them consistent with what it was before.
All right, and the town has access to maintain the pond on that little gravel drive, it looks like?
Yeah, there's still drainage easement over top of it that we had for the access to it, to the pond and around the pond.
Okay. All right, he's answered my questions, Ernie, so I'm good.
No questions.
Hey, Scott.
I guess my question is on the access aspect of the project, and if it was possible, or if you ruled out the ability to connect to the two roads that you built across the street recently. Is it not feasible to do that, and you have to put the entrance where it is, or, or is it feasible to have it directly across from those other locations?
Well, we couldn't get it, we couldn't get it directly over here because it just, we couldn't get the, it's pinched too much with the property line here. And here, we looked at, you know, bringing it this way, but there's an existing pond here.
Okay.
That is actually a wetland that we didn't want to go that way off of that road, sort of in that wooded area. And we would have had to like, it didn't work as well grading-wise. The original layout, if you remember, was looped around and was still coming, it was looping at this one, and it looped all the way around, and it came out at the same location, but we had 10 lots along the outside. This is much more efficient because it allows us to keep the wooded area along the Lehigh Trail up here. It's allowing us to keep that. Originally, this was going to come like this, and we were going to have 10 lots on the outside, but there's an existing pond in here that we didn't want to disturb, so this will remain in that wooded area. And then this access, yes, you can see where this access is here. We couldn't get this to work to be able to get it to lay out and try to keep the wooded area to the north, which is what we went over with the conservation board and stuff, too, the trying to preserve the buffer along the trail, which, so I think we've, you know, we had to balance a few things with laying it out to try to get the 10 lots on this, on this, coming off this side and trying to keep the wooded area to the north. But, yeah, this is, couldn't really get this.
I guess if you were to try to hit the southern one, you'd kind of make an S curve out of that and probably lose a lot in that corner if you had to make that connection, as I see it. The, up, up in the northwest corner there, is that a little parking area for people wishing to use the trail? Is that an amenity that the developer is giving to the town as part of this project?
Yeah, as part of the project. We're building a, this was part of the overall preliminary that we did in the concept originally that we did, that the town requested a parking area and a trail connection to the Lehigh Trail there for the, for public to access the trail. So, that's the parcel that we're, went to the town board last night and offered them to take that into dedication, that they can take dedication of that parking area and that trail connection, so the public can access the Lehigh Trail in this area. That was part of, sort of the plan all the way back through, so.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Is anybody from the public who wishes to speak or ask any questions with regard to this? Dave?
Can I take a look at the latest, this up to date, then you said?
Yeah, you said that's the one that was before the town board.
David Wright, 33, Ketchum Street. My, my question was, actually, for the benefit of the residents that are going to live there, I'm asking about the access from anybody's individual home to the Auburn Trail. Do they, are you proposing that they walk out to East Victor Road, cross the street, walk on the sidewalk all the way down to the Auburn Trail, and then cross the walk, the road again to get to Mertensia Park? So, I think we, we asked before if it would be possible to go from the cul-de-sac to the parking lot without accessing East Victor Road for the safety, convenience of the residents that are going to be living there. Did you, did you, did the developer look at that?
Well, this is what the town board wanted, as I understand it.
So, and that was last night they met?
Okay.
So, Parks and Recreation was there? Brian, okay. So, I know that the, originally, they proposed a 10-space parking lot. Parks and Rec did not want that. That's a lot to plow, and so they reduced it to, I believe, five parking spots with the access from the parking lot to the trail without having to go out onto East Victor Road. So, that's what Town Parks and Rec wanted? And that's what you're giving them? Okay. Okay, if they're happy, I'm happy.
Okay, good, good to hear. Any other comments or questions on this project?
Motion to close the public hearing?
My next move.
There you go.
Oh, hearing nothing. We're gonna entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Phil Logan says, makes the motion.
I'll second it.
Ernie seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. Do they go to the county? No? They've been there already.
No, Wes is not.
Wes, forget about that.
Yeah, Wes is down there.
Yeah, Wes is here.
Hello, Ernie.
Hey, Wes. Good to see you.
So, I've prepared a draft of the Part Two of the full environmental assessment form that potentially you could act on tonight with, with Part Three, but I thought we could go through this rather, rather quickly. There's not too much on here to note, but Part Two, we're taking a look at the impacts on various environmental resources to determine whether or not this project would have a potential significant adverse impact on the environment. So, there are a series of 18 questions, and just start off with number one here. Impact on land. Proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. So, yes, there is going to be a physical change to the land as part of the, as part of the project, but each of the subsequent categories, I've indicated as there would be no or small impact. So, nothing rises to the level of moderate to large in this regard. Impact on geological features, there, there are no impact, there is no impact on geological features. Impact on surface water, the proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies. Example, streams, rivers, ponds, or lakes. I've indicated yes here. So, this project will create a new water body, potentially with a stormwater management facility, but all of the, all of the other categories I've indicated as no or small impact. Impact on groundwater, I've indicated this project will not adversely, potentially adversely affect groundwater. Impact on flooding, I've indicated no. Impact on air, I've indicated no. Impacts on plants and animals, yes, there could be an impact to plants and animals, but each of the subcategories I've indicated that it would be no or small impact would occur. Impact on agricultural resources, I've indicated no. Impact on aesthetic resources, I've indicated no. Impact on historic and archaeological resources, I've indicated yes. The, the project parcel is within a gray area on the state's grid system. So, yes, there is a potential impact there, but I've got no or small impact. There's nothing that rises to the level of moderate to large. Impact on open space and recreation, I've indicated no. Impact on critical environmental areas, there are no state-defined critical environmental areas in the town, so that's a no. Impact on transportation, I've indicated no. Impact on energy, yes, there is a small impact on energy, but they, they're, they would be very small impacts. Nothing rises to the level of moderate to large. Impacts on noise, odor, and light, yes, there's a potential impact with noise and, and lighting, but those are likely to be small for various reasons, including, you know, the increase in noise level would probably cease after construction is complete. So, noise levels would return to what the ambient noise levels are today. Impact on human health, no impact on human health, and consistency with community plans, this is not inconsistent with community plans, and consistency with the community character, this is not inconsistent with the community character. So, that's a very brief go-through of, of Part Two of the EAF. If there's any questions, we can, we can take a look at those if you have any, but otherwise...
Anybody on the board have any questions of Wes?
I have a question.
That does?
I guess consistent with my other comment regarding impact on transportation, item F, other impacts, I guess it would be helpful to me, anyway, as a board member, to know what your traffic person feels about the location of the intersection with respect to the other intersection and the, the offset intersection that's created by this new public road. I just, I think that would be helpful to the board. I realize it's only 10 homes that are accessing off of here, but this is specifically spoken about in our regs. This is something you want to avoid.
I can get more detail on that for you.
I think that would be helpful.
That'd be fine.
And I think that would then add justification to the finding.
Okay.
On impact of transportation.
Okay.
Are you speaking specifically, Scott, about access management?
Yes.
In terms of distance from other intersections, all that kind of thing? So, you're looking for a comment either from Wes's group or from...
Yeah, I think, I think in the past, we've had his person, I think it's Lorenzo, right?
Yeah.
Who actually was part of developing those regs. Have him comment on it. I think that would be, that'd be helpful for me, anyway.
Wes, can you do that?
Yeah, I'll, I can go back to Lorenzo. We can, we can get some more information to help satisfy...
I realize they've indicated site distance, and that's certainly one criteria to, to evaluate, but those regs are, are almost solely based on separation distances between access points. I think the fact that there are only a moderate amount of homes on, coming off of each, each street is a, is somewhat a mitigating factor to that, but I'd, I'd like to have whoever the designated person is, you know, representing your firm say something along those lines.
And I, I just want to add that they did, they did comment on it, and the other, LaBella commented, because there is some criteria about the distance from the road that it has to be at a 90 before it, I think it's, was 100 foot. There was a comment on LaBella that it needs, you know, that the road needs to be perpendicular for, I believe, you know, a certain distance from the road to before we took this bend, and I don't think we could get that to work over there.
So, that, Link, that's, that's a good point. We did comment on that, but I think Scott's comment is going a little bit further and, and kind of looking at and assessing the number of intersections at close proximity to one another in, in general, generally close, considering your Section One, Two, and Three. I think that's maybe a little bit more of what you're getting at. Is that right, Scott?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we have a really good local example, and a really good local example is the intersection of Brace Road and Bouton Hill Road, where Brace Road, as you might notice, jogs over about 50 or 60 feet and then continues on one way or the other from there. Under low-flow conditions, you don't see much of a problem because cars don't really arrive there at a very fast rate, but as you may also recall, when the bridge was out, or excuse me, when the roundabout was being constructed and, and traffic was diverted through Bouton Hill Road, for those paying attention, that intersection was pretty difficult. And so, today, 2022, when we look at this project and we see these three access points and we say, you know, there's not a lot of traffic going through there, we're, we're like the, the DOT planners with the can of worms back in the 60s. You know, there wasn't a lot of traffic going through the can of worms back in the 60s, but there's a lot of traffic going through there now. And so, I really think that's the theme of what those regs is all about. It's not about today. It's about the future and what we get. And I think Brace Road at Bouton Hill, if you decide to take a look at that sometime, as I do, because I am conscious, and I drive that way quite a bit, you know, you get enough cars going in there and people trying to turn, the whole thing's about turning movements and close proximity there, too.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to, you know, if, if there's mitigating factors and your, you know, person feels that it's appropriate to, that the site plan is appropriate as proposed, then that, that takes care of my concern.
Okay, yeah, I will coordinate with our...
The engineers back at the, in the can of worms thought it was a great design. That comment.
So, that, yeah, we can shore up our response here with an assessment from Lorenzo and his team. That's fine. Makes sense.
I just think it would give us some basis for that particular comment.
Okay.
Okay, then Wes will look forward to giving that to you, and he looks forward to looking at it. Anything else from the board on this? Okay, so we have to put it over, because we don't have a resolution.
Now, we won't act on Seeker tonight.
No.
No. So, Link, do I understand correctly, are you going back to another town board meeting for this potential parking scenario?
They just told me to coordinate with Brian.
Okay.
So, I was going to get this plan that, like I said, it's had off the press from the input I got last night, and coordinate with Brian to make sure he's satisfied with this, and then we were just going to run with it.
Okay.
And then I was just gonna figure we would do it again, once we get through further down the review process with the planning board. We'll have to go back and ultimately get that portion dedicated, but...
Okay. And just to update you on where LaBella is at with our, our most current review, things, the responses that you've provided look pretty solid to us. We should be able to get that updated comment letter out to both staff and, and the applicant here shortly.
Link, I'll check with town board, but I think they thought you were coming back on September 26th. I'll check.
Okay. Well, I, I know they wanted me to coordinate what we talked about with Brian to have at review, so I'm gonna send that over and make sure we copy.
Yeah, I just think they thought maybe you were coming back, but I'll clarify with them.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, we can go back if they want us to, so, but...
Okay, we all set on this one for tonight?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Link. Number two is a preliminary application for Stonbrooke Subdivision, 2PS 2022, 1403 East Victor Road. Owner is Bruce Zesimone, Zone Residential Two. Applicant is requesting approval for a clustered subdivision of 85 buildable lots on 100 acres in the Town of Victor with 15-plus acres in the Town of Farmington, for a total of 115 acres. This is the second step in a three-step process for a major subdivision. The sketch plan was acknowledged complete on March 22nd, 2022. And I have a note here that LaBella was going to finish review on the updated plan set, and that the draft was sent to the Town of Farmington Supervisor and the Town of Victor Supervisor. Have you heard back from either of them?
No, that was for the...
Guess that was it?
Yeah.
Okay, just the land trust. Okay. Okay.
Good evening, folks. Matt Tomlinson, Marathon Engineering. We were here, or have been here before you folks several times, and we have some outstanding comments from the various agencies, but I've been talking with Wes and working with the developer as well as the Genesee Land Trust. I believe we've submitted memorandum of understanding that Genesee Land Trust had put together for the town's review. And the graphic up on the board here, I can spend a little bit of time talking about, but it matches the anticipated conservation area required, both the 50% within Victor and slightly over 50% for the total amount. We are proposing a mix of conservation easements in various areas highlighted in green, with the blue being land that would be actually transferred to Genesee Land Trust as ownership of the land versus a conservation easement over that portion. So, happy to dive into that if needed, but I know that there's been quite a bit of discussion, and the limits of all of that has not changed, just the designation of transferred land versus conservation easement. We have received a copy of the draft resolution that's here tonight. I think there were a couple of conditions relative to sidewalk that the developer would like possibly some dialogue on relative to the limits being requested, both on the north side. And for reference, I believe they're condition number 9A and B. On the north side of Sunray Crest, right now, we're proposing sidewalk on one side of the roadway throughout the development, and I think there's a request to that small stub extension over to Sunray Crest, extend the sidewalk on both sides of the road for connection, where we're only connecting to a single-side sidewalk within our development. So, we wanted to just chat through that with the board and maybe understand a little better the request for that versus potentially looping the sidewalk where it dead-ends currently on that stub road.
So, I've got a graphic that I can share with the board and the design professionals and the applicant here to have that conversation about sidewalks, but do you want to get into that now? Is that your preference?
I will.
Okay. I've got a highlighted image here that basically depicts where the existing sidewalks are. In general, the existing sidewalks are in green, and the proposed sidewalks are in blue. So, as you can see, Sunray Crest, as Mr. Tomlinson described, there are sidewalks on both sides of the existing street here. Currently, the sidewalk does end here on the south side, and it also ends, the north side of the street, the sidewalk ends here. So, I'll also bring up maybe... See if I can get everybody dizzy here.
I think it'll be dizzy.
You succeeded, Wes.
There we go. Hold on a second. As you can see on this aerial photograph, you can see where the existing sidewalks end. So, this house here, we've got the north end of the sidewalk terminating here. Well, what do we do with that sidewalk? I don't know. Maybe you just leave it the way it is. And then, this sidewalk is the one that the developer is proposing to connect to and continue into eastward into his development, as we see here, right in this area. So, I discussed with staff and the town staff, and it seems like maybe the logical thing to do would be to extend both of these sidewalks, as they are on both sides of Sunray Crest, to this intersection here. Yes, I guess maybe if you terminated the sidewalk here, you wouldn't have anywhere to go, but maybe a crosswalk could be installed across the end of Sunray Crest to allow for connection to this blue proposed sidewalk. That was one of the conditions that we've included at a draft resolution. So, there is a part B to that condition as well for sidewalks. Currently, the developer is proposing down here on the south side along East Victor Road to install sidewalk from the proposed intersection with East Victor Road down to the Auburn Trail. As we've got sidewalks on both sides of Fieldcrest Lane here, and they also extend westward towards East Victor Road out in this area, it makes sense to me for residents over in this area and here to also have access to the Auburn Trail via sidewalk on East Victor Road. Otherwise, I suppose they would be walking on the shoulder of the road instead of a sidewalk or traversing the existing sidewalk network this way into the new sidewalks and getting to the Auburn Trail. It just makes, in our minds, it makes a logical connection to the Auburn Trail, and it's not so different from what the town required Southgate Hills to do with their Phase 2 along East Victor Road as well. So, that's kind of the discussion or the dialogue that I think maybe the developer would like to have with the planning board. I think the town engineer and town staff are in favor of what we've kind of depicted here and making those connections and referencing not only the comprehensive plan as part of the findings, but also the current connectivity and access plan that Lorenzo is finishing up with the town now, where through the public participation process, it was noted that there was a desire for future pedestrian connections and specifically in this location on East Victor Road between Break of Day Road and the Auburn Trail. So, it's kind of consistent with those findings. That's what I've got on that topic.
Thanks, Wes. So, that definitely helps us understand that, and I think Jeff can speak as well. I think what, we have an understanding that especially on our property itself, that sidewalk extension or that piece of it would be of benefit. I think if we could return the sidewalk for a mid-block crossing where there are no homes, driveway access, that kind of thing, you know, that's a couple hundred feet of sidewalk that would go a long ways towards accounting for the cost there and doesn't necessarily provide any additional circulation or access point for the neighbors or for the, any type of issue from a pedestrian safety that we could anticipate there. So, that would be a request, I think, that we'd have the board potentially to modify that where we could create a mid-block crossing of the sidewalk there and potentially apply the cost for that section of sidewalk down to the extension along East Victor Road. Jeff, I don't know if you want to add anything to that as well?
Yes, Jeff Smith of Woodstone Custom Homes. I think only somewhat in response to Wes's comment of us being the same as what is being asked of Southgate, it is not, because this is setting a precedent of off-site sidewalks, whereas Southgate is on their property frontage as they would be on East Victor Road for us. And the question I would have for the board and for the committees is that Break of Day is quite a ways away from Fieldcrest Lane, and I don't know of any new developments along that way that will be in a position where we are, where we're willing to install sidewalks on our property. So, doesn't it raise a larger question of how is the town proposing to fund off-site sidewalks where there is no developer involved that can run sidewalks along their property? I think since it is somewhat setting a precedent of not only in two positions, actually, where we would be off-site, one, connecting to that sidewalk that is terminated prior to that driveway on that north property line, and secondly, along East Victor Road. And I just think it's worth the conversation more than an assumption that the staff would like to see sidewalks extended. So, that was my point, Wes. I think this is different than asking for sidewalks along property frontage. And at the same time, possibly Matt's solution is one solution, is that there's an understanding that this is an off-site situation, and then rather than asking us to run duplicate sidewalks and essentially develop another crossing within our development to do that, that we may consider that that would be a decent trade-off of why do duplicate sidewalks up on Fieldcrest and instead devote that expenditure to that extension, off-site extension, to along East Victor Road? That would be my input, I guess, for this evening.
Just to refresh the planning board's memory with the Southgate 2 project, which is this parcel right here on the west side of East Victor Road. Southgate 1 is here, and then the project we just looked at earlier tonight is on this parcel. So, the Southgate 2, they're proposing, or what was approved were sidewalks in the development, right? And then also a sidewalk that extends from the development all the way to the Auburn Trail, including this parcel here, which is not owned by the developer. So, in the right, this also included a right-of-way adjustment, I believe, to some degree. We're not seeing the accurate right-of-way here, but so, I don't remember the length of the sidewalk from here to the Auburn Trail, but just for comparison purposes, you can see the, you know, we're in the same neighborhood here, right? So, we're looking for a connection from Fieldcrest down to the Auburn Trail, and then this is where a sidewalk was approved for...
Oh, the small difference is that they were connecting two of their frontage parcels together on the west side of East Victor Road. So, there was off-site, but it was a connectivity of off-site parcel. That's your explanation?
Well, initially, the developer didn't want to provide the sidewalk on East Victor Road, and then they initially, then they said, well, we will provide it from Southgate 2 to this intersection here, and then they said, we will use, we would like to just use the existing sidewalk in here for the connection to the trail. And the town said, no, we want you to go all the way to the trail along East Victor Road. So, yes, it does connect 1 with 2 across this private, in front of this private property, but it also connects to the Auburn Trail.
Wes, that's about 1,400 linear feet of sidewalk.
Okay.
From Southgate 2 to Auburn Trail on the west side of East Victor Road. I'm not sure if that was, number was relevant or a part of your discussion. You said you don't remember what it was. I just measured it on Google Earth, so... I'm inclined to look at, looking, getting back to where Sunray Crest is in that driveway. I think I've advocated for eliminating that turnaround, just creating grass. If you want to go back to that, Wes, that'll kind of tie into this conversation. If you have a crossing there on the plus side, there is a sidewalk across that parcel, the parcel's driveway and on the south side of Sunray Crest. Hang on. That is owned by John Simons, John and Jennifer Simons. But there's no sidewalk crossing the driveway on the north side, so you'd have to go through that driveway, do some additional construction, driveway cuts and things like that. So, it's a little more costly and/or construction-intensive than just tying into doing a crosswalk there, for instance.
Where would you propose the crossing?
If you're...
Good question. What would the connection point be from north to south if that's your, that's your proposal to us, right?
Yeah, so, I originally had thought we would do that on our side of the line, if you will, just to avoid lawn, and we would have to, obviously, as Mr. Logan said, come across the driveway through that area, but we're going to end up having to do a little bit of that on the south side as well. So, I was thinking that it would be here because we could do ADA gutter sections and that kind of thing.
Well, that makes sense. It's all new construction there, so I don't have a problem with that. I'm just seeing if there's a way to mitigate that at all, and it does make sense to run it just into your, the parcel that you guys are developing.
And that's where you would propose the crossing then, and then we go to a single?
And go to a single on the south side, similar to how we have it currently proposed. Well, that's about 200 feet, which turns into real dollars, obviously, for sidewalk and provides, I think, the same circulation or pedestrian routing that is being proposed with the current sidewalk configurations.
Because one way or the other, we'd have to have a crossing. A crossing is either on Crest Brook or a crossing is on the end of Fieldcrest, the end of existing Fieldcrest.
And so, your proposal is to do that and then also do the sidewalk connecting Break of Day to the entrance?
Not break, connecting Fieldcrest to our development, yes.
Fieldcrest, yep.
What about at the south end by, on East Victor?
Wes, can you shift that from Fieldcrest, from the green there to our subdivision? That would be...
This from here to here.
Right.
You're proposing to do that as well?
Well, that's the condition that's in there that we're...
Okay. I just want to make sure I was clear on your proposal, Wes.
Well, it is kind of last minute, because we didn't see the draft until we walked in tonight. But yes, the proposal is that since there is redundancy in the upper section, that doesn't make as much sense as this lower extension, we would be pleased to do the lower extension if it were considered, if that redundancy was eliminated.
I think that Break of Day still has access to Auburn Trail, somewhat back, distance back from the intersection with East Victor Road. Am I correct, Dave? Yeah, so, and there was parking at one point there. I'm not sure if there still is, but, okay. Just to keep that in your follow-up. So, I don't know if we need it running sidewalks on Break of Day all the way to East Victor Road and then down, unless you're getting, in the future, putting sidewalks along East Victor Road for that whole development from, I guess, that Sunray Crest further up, but those people can still go through Fieldcrest, so... That sounds reasonable to me, what we're talking about here, to go along East Victor Road from Fieldcrest to your development access point.
What's that distance?
We're about 450 feet on our property, and I think that the depth of that, I'm not entirely sure. I was guessing around 200 feet was the depth of the existing lot, so it's about 650 feet, maybe 600, maybe 700 feet once you cross the right-of-way.
I got property line to this edge of Fieldcrest is 250 feet approximately.
So, about 700 to 750 feet in total along there?
This piece right here.
Uh-huh. Plus the piece on the other side, which is already represented to the trail.
Yep.
Yeah.
That, to me, sounds like a plan, far as sidewalks are concerned.
I think, I like it. I like the proposal.
Your proposal is then to put a sidewalk, we have just indicated, along East Victor Road.
So, satisfied condition...
In lieu of putting it across West Street?
Satisfied condition 9B and modify 9A such that we would provide a crossing immediately entering our property versus extending it across Crest Brook.
Well, you've taken out this piece right here, a potential sidewalk, and just eliminating that, putting a crossing here, extending across that last parcel, and then going over to East Victor Road and...
Correct.
And those tie-ins. It sounds like the residents...
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
I was hoping you'd say that.
Wes says yes, yeah. I think we're at agreement, finally.
So, as far as other conditions, you know, they're the standard technical ones that we would anticipate, and appreciate the board's consideration of that. And if there's any other questions, I know we've been here several times. I think we've talked through the majority of the other items that we need to work through with Wes and with town staff.
Does this need to be amended now?
Yep.
It's the same thing.
Oh. Do you make any changes?
I don't think so. I think it's the same thing.
Right, the public hearing has already been closed on this one, so, we've got a draft here. Want to take a look at it, or maybe just read it?
Um, yeah, we just, someone should read it, probably, whether it be you or whomever.
Well, I'd be glad to read it. This is a resolution for Stone Brook Preliminary Subdivision, East Victor Road, today's date 9/13/22, application number two PS 22. Whereas on or about May 10, 2022, the Secretary of the Town of Victor Planning Board received a preliminary subdivision application for the Stone Brook Major Subdivision, the application, which was submitted by Jeff Smith, Woodstone Custom Homes, the applicant, for a project. And whereas it is the intent of the applicant to develop 85 single-family residences on the east side of East Victor Road and at the terminus of Sunray Crest Drive, tax map number 28.04-2-62.000, where said property is within the town's Residential Two zoning district and within the town's Residential C overlay zoning district, which is 1.0 units per acre, and proposes to utilize the Town of Victor's clustered subdivision provisions found in Article 5 of Chapter 184 of the Victor Town Code, where the residences would be clustered on approximately 50 acres of the approximately 115-acre parcel, 15 acres of the lands being located in the town of Farmington. And the applicant intends for the residential development to be included within the town's drainage improvement area. All of the above are considered to be the project, which is more fully described in the applicant's submission materials, including but not limited to the May 10, 2022 letter of intent, revised preliminary engineer's report dated July 12, 2022, Part One of the full environmental assessment form, and revised subdivision plan set drawings prepared by Marathon Engineering, including a revision date of July 12, 2022. And whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board classified the project as Type 1 action under State and Environmental Quality Review Act pursuant to Seekers Implementing Regulations, initiated the lead agency coordination process by transmitting Part One of the Seeker Environmental Assessment Form and project information to involved and interested agencies, and issued a negative declaration on August 23, 2022. And whereas the planning board makes the additional findings, public hearing was duly called for and published in the Daily Messenger, and whereby all property owners within the minimum 500 feet from the project location were notified by U.S. Mail, and under review sign was posted on the subject parcel as required by Town Code. Two, the planning board opened a public hearing regarding the application on June 14, 2022, which remained open until August 23, 2022, at which time the public hearing was closed. The public was afforded an opportunity to speak regarding the proposed application during this timeframe. Three, the town is undertaking a street, a street connectivity and access plan project, and a draft report has been produced that reflects the interests of residents and community stakeholders who have expressed a need and opportunity to construct new sidewalks in various locations in the town, including along East Victor Road between break of day Road to the Auburn Trail. This finding is further supported by the Town of Victor's comprehensive plan goal of promoting pedestrian walkability, bicycling, and non-automotive transportation within neighborhoods. These items are detailed under the walkability topic on Page 5.10 of the Victor Comprehensive Plan, as well as further detailed under goals and strategies, including requiring sidewalks and bicycle slash shared lanes in non-rural developments, Page 5.20 of the Victor Comprehensive Plan. The proposed sidewalks in and around the proposed project shall make connections to existing pedestrian and trail infrastructure. Four, the Conservation Board reviewed the project on June 7, 2022, and provided the planning board with their findings. Five, the application was referred to the Ontario County Planning Board under Section 239-N of the General Municipal Law. Six, on June 8, 2022, Ontario County Planning Board did not meet, and the referring bodies were able to take final action on referred items 30 days after receipt. Seven, on May 26, 2022, the Fire Marshal reviewed the preliminary plans and provided comments. Six, the Town of Victor Stormwater Manager revised the preliminary plans on June 3, 2022, and July 28, 2022, and provided comments. Nine, Labella Associates reviewed the preliminary subdivision and made comments in a letter dated June 10, 2022. Then the code enforcement reviewed the preliminary plans on June 4, 2022, and provided comments. Comments were addressed on July 28, 2022, with no further comments. Eleven, the Town of Farmington Water and Sewer Department reviewed the preliminary plan on June 10, 2022, and July 25, 2022, and provided comments. Twelve, the County Victor Highway Department reviewed the preliminary plan on May 19, 2022, and provided comments. Thirteen, the Town of Victor Parks and Recreation Department reviewed the plans on June 13, 2022, and provided comments. Fourteen, pursuant to Section 27-8J of the Town Code, a recreation fee for each lot or in the event of a multiple dwelling, a recreation fee for each family unit in lieu of parkland shall be paid to the town before issuance of a building permit. Fifteen, pursuant to Section 27-8 of the Town Code, a one-time charge for new connections to the consolidated district sewer collection system shall be paid to the town before issuing of a building permit. Sixteen, the town engineer has previously advised that sanitary sewer pump station seven, the PS 7, located at the corner of East Victor Road and New York State Route 96 is at capacity with the approvals of the Blue Mount Rise subdivision and Victor Jeep sites plan. An updated evaluation was conducted by Labella Associates between October and December 2021, using pump runtimes from January 2020 through October 2021. Labella assessed pump station capacity, existing flows, and projected flow rates. Within the near-term build-out of South Gate Phase Two, it's the west side of East Victor Road, 15 lots only, along with other approved projects under construction, like the Blue Mount Rise and Victor Jeep, PS 7 would be at capacity, considering the station is well-maintained and ongoing construction results and no increase to extraneous flows, its inflow and infiltration. Now, therefore, a bit resolved, that the preliminary subdivision application of Jeff Smith, Woodstone Custom Homes, 15 Fishers Road, Suite 202, Pittsburgh, New York, major subdivision entitled Stone Brook Subdivision, drawn by Marathon Engineering, dated May 10, 2022, received by the planning board May 10, 2022, last revised July 12, 2022, planning board application number two-PS 2022 be approved with the following conditions: Conditions that must be met prior to the mayor chairman signing the preliminary subdivision plan; that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid, as per fee reimbursement local law, adopt in November 25, 1996; two, that Section 4 standard approval conditions for all subdivisions, major and minor, of design and construction standards be met; three, that the comments in his letter dated June 10, 2022 from Labella Associates be addressed; four, that the comments dated May 26, 2022 from the Town of Victor Fire Marshal be addressed; five, that comments from the Town of Farmington Water and Sewer Department dated June 10, 2022 be addressed; six, that comments from the Town of Victor Stormwater Program Manager dated June 3, 2022, and July 28, 2022 be addressed; seven, that comments from the Town of Victor Highway Superintendent dated May 19, 2022 be addressed; eight, that comments from the Parks and Recreation be, dated June 13, 2022 be addressed; nine, that the preliminary subdivision plans and future final subdivision plans be revised to depict additional sidewalks following locations. And are these the ones that we just talked about? Wes?
Yeah, that's exactly right, and my understanding, based on the conversation, is that the sub-paragraph A is going to change to some degree by extending the north sidewalk on Sunray Crest eastward just beyond or into the project area to provide some form of mid-block crossing prior to the sidewalk reaching the intersection. So, we'll capture that here and revise paragraph A in that fashion. Paragraph B, I think, would stand.
Is okay?
Yeah.
All right, so, paragraph A will be as just amended. B, on the northeast side of East Victor Road, between the existing easternmost sidewalk on Fieldcrest Lane to the new proposed intersection of Riverstone Way and East Victor Road. Conditions that are ongoing, standard conditions that must be adhered to: One, that the major subdivision comply with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for land development, including Section 4; Two, that the location of all conservation easement markers shall be shown on the final plans; Three, should underwater, should underground water conditions be encountered during construction, the developer is to address the encroachment and impact to the underground water conditions to the satisfaction of the town engineer; Four, that no certificate of occupancy shall be issued for any, any building until such time that the town engineer confirms in writing that pump station seven, PS 7, improvements have been completed, and that PS 7 can accommodate sanitary flows from the project. And be further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, so, just one, one question, Ernie, maybe it's not required for the preliminary approval, but how does the draft memorandum of understanding factor into the approval either at the, at this stage or at the final approval? I mean, right now, we just have a draft, right, that hasn't necessarily been formalized?
It's now going to be final. This was a draft for review by the board?
No, I'm not talking about this. I'm talking about the memorandum of understanding.
Oh, yeah.
Like, at what point does that have to be formalized, and is it, may not be at the preliminary approval phase, but at the final?
Isn't that for the town board to do?
But isn't that a condition of the final approval, that that is resolved? I'm just asking.
Al, that's a great question. So, we know that the project is going to provide the 50% open space, and I think maybe what we, we could have done in this, in this resolution is identify the, the intent for the developer to donate or transfer that, this acreage to the Genesee Land Trust as part of, which is kind of a part of the 50% opens, satisfying that 50% open space requirement. So, the project does provide that 50% open space, but I, I see your point, and I think that, I know in past meetings, I've, I've asked the applicant about, or the applicant's representative about providing that draft memorandum of, of understanding, which they did. So, yes, the town board needs to take a look at that, and why don't we, why don't we, the town staff, review with the town attorney at, at what point that needs to be finalized prior to the final subdivision being approved? If you want, we can amend. We can provide a finding in this resolution, if it's okay with the board, indicating that the 50% open space requirement is being satisfied per the plans that are in front of us now, in that it's the applicant's intent to transfer that land to the Genesee Land Trust. I think that's good to acknowledge in this resolution. That's a good point. Okay.
So, if the transfer doesn't happen for some reason, how does that work into this? I don't know if that's something that...
Well, that's in the final approval phase, right? That modifies what's being proposed here, right? Then the developer would, or someone would have to continue to own that property.
Mm-hmm. So...
Will we make that announcement as part of our resolution, and then if it's not achieved by the time they want final, then we can't really go for final until it's resolved? Right?
Kind of what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
You should've said that before I read this whole thing.
I was waiting to get to the end and see what was in there. I mean, I, I think Wes proposed, you know, modification that we could incorporate it with some relatively simple language at this phase.
You don't have to read it all again, Ernie.
Yeah, we won't make you reread it.
Not my intent, believe me.
You could just need to add a little language to it, that's all.
What language is proposed?
Well, that the, the design, as it's currently depicted, satisfies the 50% open space requirement that's in the Town Code, in that it's the applicant's intent to move forward with transferring a large portion of that open space to the Genesee Land Trust, and that, that process has begun, and that the town does have in its hands a, a draft memorandum of under, understanding.
Well, can we make that an ongoing condition? Not a standard condition, but a condition saying that this is with the understanding about this memorandum of understanding, and if that is negated, then this needs to be revisited, I would assume, because it changes the condition under which we're approving this.
If they, if they don't move forward, or if Genesee Land Trust doesn't move forward with taking ownership of the land?
Yeah. I mean, you'd have to change the language. It may not effectively change the subdivision plan, but you still have to acknowledge that it's no longer going to be owned by somebody else, right?
Yeah, I guess maybe we could have an ongoing condition indicating something to the effect of, you know, successful conveyance of this land to the Genesee Land Trust, or by some other, um, conveyance to some other entity, if so inclined.
I mean, it could all revert to extensions of property lines, and that's that.
And that's what I was going to suggest. I mean, ultimately, if we don't find a third party to convey it...
Can I talk closer to the microphone, Joe?
I, I was going to suggest that, that ultimately, if for some reason Genesee Land Trust falls through, then we would have to come back and revise the entire subdivision plan, because as Joe was saying, we would, our alternative, which we discussed earlier, is to just divvy it up and put a bunch of conservation markers. This blue plan is our preference, and so far, we've been successful at finding that party to acquire it. The one thing, and Wes may remember, the, the one thing I wondered also is, was there any reference to this in the comments to the Parks and Rec dated June 13th, because part of the condition is that we addressed Park and Rec comments? Was there any discussion in their comments regarding the transfer? As if there was, and it's integrated in that, in, in...
In the resolution.
In the resolution of number eight.
Good question.
I think the only thing I recall was that the town didn't want to take possession, right?
That's, that's true. Well, it's all, it was referenced, but not in a direct manner, I guess. But clearly, that might be one way to integrate it in the conditions.
I, I think that everyone has the understanding that we need to comply with the 50% requirement, and that whether that's ownership by the individual lot owners with conservation easement to the Town of Victor, or it's ownership by a land trust or some other entity, that we will be in compliance. So, I don't know how specific you need to get as far as conveyance of land in there to ensure that we're compliant with the cluster development, because that's what we're getting approval underneath, so.
And that's a standard condition.
It's right in the front paragraph of your resolution.
The only thing...
So, either way, we're intending to comply with it, so I don't anticipate an issue. I just don't want us to have to go backwards and undo something if we tie it up a little bit too specifically here.
Well, I think you'd have to update the preliminary plan to show, like Jeff said, the lot line changes that would be necessary to achieve the elimination of their takeover of the property, you know?
Yeah. So, a condition of it to be resolved prior to final approval, and then if we had to modify preliminary at the same time as final, phase one, we could definitely accommodate that. I don't think that that would cause any issues on our end.
I think that's the way to do it.
Me, indirectly, it's certainly addressed by the fact that we have to adhere to 50% open space as a requirement. However, but I agree with that. I don't, I don't, I don't want to be so specific that we're mentioning Genesee Land Trust and everything, and then all of a sudden, I mean, that's our intent, yes.
I'm okay with a condition like that. I think that makes sense, and we can include that finding that I described earlier.
Sure.
Yep.
So, do it as a finding and an ongoing, or just as an ongoing?
Just a, just an ongoing condition that the, um...
I can get the words that you had.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll go to the recording.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't putting it in two different places, so.
Yep, I can help with that.
Thank you.
Is this all set?
So, understanding that this is going to be resolved with some language, then I would make a motion to a... So, understanding that this is going to be resolved with some language, then I would make a motion to approve this.
Okay, well, we'll be having a staff meeting on Thursday, and we can hopefully wrap this up at that time.
You've got a motion on the table, right?
Yep, we do.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Hold the paper.
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone, for your time, appreciate it.
Next is the McGuire parking expansion, it's formerly New Tex. 20SP 2022, Zoned Light Industrial, it's 8050 State Route 51. The owner is Dixon Enterprises LLC. Tax map number 14.02-1-3.110. Applicant is requesting approval to construct a 9,400 square foot parking addition, creation of a west facade entrance, and a modification of the loading dock on the east facade. And staff comments, one of them is that board members are looking for a revised landscaping plan, showing some vegetative shielding of the building, and that would be on the west side. And the architecture comments need to be addressed. And we are presently waiting for the county comments, so. There is no resolution. Public hearing still open?
Yes.
All right, the public hearing is still open. I think we'll leave it open for one more, one more time, because we'll have some things to get. And in my comment, there is, correspondence were received from Amy Bartel, who was a neighbor over in the next town over. I don't know if you've seen it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you've seen it. Okay.
Go ahead. All set? Good evening, Board, my name is Brad Humberstone, I'm the Director of Architecture at Mitchell Design Build. And I'm here representing McGuire Family Properties. Mr. McGuire purchased this property recently with the intention to subdivide inside, to lease it to five tenants. It's a hundred thousand square foot building, building square footage is not being modified at all. Just using the hundred thousand square feet and subdividing it, leasing it to five different tenants. I'm here tonight to propose for the approval of a 9,400 square foot parking lot on the west side of the building. Part one, 9,400 square foot parking lot on the west side of the building that fronts Old Dutch Road. As part of this additional parking area, the whole point of it is for a tenant, which is landlocked essentially from the parking, the existing parking lot on the east side. They don't have any access, the way the building is divided, there's no access to any of that parking on the, current parking on the east side. So, the proposal is for additional parking lot on the west side, roughly 18 spaces, a entrance of sorts to this unknown tenant. And a type of architectural canopy, just kind of accentuating the fact that it is an entrance. Again, we don't know who the, the owner doesn't, currently not know who the tenant is or what they will be desiring. And part of the problem with this is the removal of existing vegetation, which we are proposing to, in sort, replace. There's a lot of mature blue spruces which are being removed. The intention is to plant those back and, and, and have them replace the, the old ones, which the parking lot is currently taking up. This has been reworked a few times with grading, with grading studies, to really try and minimize any of the removal of the vegetation at the corner. Because that's a very dense growth area, we really don't want to touch as much of that as possible. I know that the intersection is a focal point of the site. Currently, as you progress north down Old Dutch Road, there really isn't many trees past the corner. We're proposing trees blocking a, a lot of this parking. Again, it's, it's a, we're proposing to basically put blue spruce back. And then as you progress north past the parking lot, there really is nothing currently, and we're not proposing to do anything, anything more, at least as of, as of this design.
You altered the, the area of the parking lot at all?
Excuse me?
You changed the area of the parking lot?
The total square footage of the parking lot has not changed. No, sir. The entrance has always been directly across the entrance to JW Danforth, across the street. And another part of, of this whole, of this whole approval process is the current's front setback is 80 feet. And we are formally proposing to minimize it down to 30 feet, so a 50-foot reduction. This, again, is something that is precedented by the property across the street. Their current setback for the parking lot is, is even less than 30 feet. So, we're, we're trying to not be any worse than the situation directly across Old Dutch Road. The other part of the project is on the east side of the building, which is really just accessed by the, the current parking lot. There's currently four loading docks. We are proposing to essentially make it six loading docks, but to rearrange them in a, in a way that satisfies the interior separation, to create shared loading docks for these four remaining tenants who can access that side. It's, it's really visually from Route 251, it's a minimal impact. There's a little bit of grading, it's, it's a very subtle grading out there, but it's a, it's, it's not a recessed loading dock pad, it's actually a flat pad. So, from parking lot, progressing west towards the building, it's, you know, completely flat, there's no, it doesn't recess at all. So, it's a really simple site design process to, to achieve this. And then there are some miscellaneous entrance points for accessibility and to satisfy building egress, which this building already has an interior permit package that was presented and approved to the building code. And like I said, that's already been approved. So, we're progressing with the interior work as we speak. I know at the last meeting, two weeks ago, there was a question from Wes about stormwater. And we had a, an analysis done. I had, I had mentioned in my meeting, in my presentation last time, that it was our finding that previously, back in around 99 or 2000, the stormwater system, the facility, was expanded as a part of a master plan to create, what we found was about 70,000 square feet of parking, and another 40,000 or so square foot of, of building that was never, never done. The, the stormwater system was built to capture all of that stuff. So, from a, from a stormwater standpoint, and addressing the Aronacote Creek watershed comments, there was really no, no significant impact. The system was sized per our assessment and per, per our stormwater engineers' report, which was included as a part of the packet. There was also a question about parking counts, that I did not have a, a response to at the time, that, that we went back and assessed and analyzed, you know, the current situation, which I, I, I don't have in front of me, and I, I can't really read it. But it, we, we had, I, I believe it was 80, 88 or 89 parking spaces currently, and we were proposing to increase it by 18 on the, with the addition of the west side lot. Essentially, what's there works now, and we're increasing it. The, uh, the building use is currently a BF1S1, really light manufacturing currently, and mostly warehouse and storage. Not heavily occupied spaces. And through the three known tenants and the, and the two, you know, proposed that, that are unknown at this time, the three known tenants are, are not big occupiers of, of the space. You know, it's, it's our, it's our guess that that won't change, and, and current, you know, around 100 parking spaces will suffice. And this satisfies the, the calculations performed via the-
I think you've gone over pretty much everything that you did last time. So, is there something new that you want to present to us?
Well, I presented the parking situation, which I didn't have an answer to last time, and, and I, I validated Wes's questions about the stormwater with the additional information.
Brad, could, could you talk a little bit about the response to Mark Kukufka's memo, right? You did provide a response indicating that you would be, you'd talk with the property owner, or those items that Mark Kukufka brought up regarding to extra, architecture would be considered and discussed with the owner. You know, you don't, you don't know who the tenant is at this point. But it, it kind of looks like, you know, what, what he's indicated, what Mark Kukufka has indicated, the architectural consultant, is that the, the articulation that you've provided doesn't really match what the guidelines and requirements are for the Route 251 corridor. So, do you have any revised architectural elevations to show the board?
At this time, no, there are, there are no revised elevations. We, I mean, I, I don't even know what, basically, what I spoke to Mr. McGuire about was that the idea is, when a tenant is determined, we would come back and, and try and get kind of like a, I guess, a further approval on the situation. I mean, I, I don't want to, we don't want to build some grand thing just to have it be a 7,500 square foot warehouse, and they don't need all that stuff. It's, it's kind of a catch 22, I guess, we, we don't really know at this point. If it happens to be some type of headquarters for a global bank, I, I don't even know, but, and they, they require something that is a little bit more grand, matching more what's on the east side. I, I mean, I, I think that's a totally different situation, and that's something that can be handled separately. But I think having that hold up a parking lot is a tough situation.
There's been instances in the past, Pl, Planning Board, you might remember, where, you know, site plans, sometimes they get approved with some conditions that, you know, they return for architectural review at certain times. And maybe this is one of those, maybe this is one of those times. I'm just kind of thinking off the top of my head here.
I mean, if I, if I may also make an additional comment. The, the timeline for tenants moving in, namely, the, the main tenant who's taking up a 40,000 square foot portion of this building, they require to be in and operational by November 1. And at the very latest, that was what the lease was signed to, and this was a, a promise that Mr. McGuire made, to get this building and to, to have this operational. That is really, the only thing that that tenant needs is stuff on the east side. And that would be a loading dock, which we're really, we're, we're not doing anything on that side because of the west side parking lot holding everything up. There has been really no comment to any of the proposed modifications to the east side loading dock. And that is, you know, it's, it's, it's one project, but it's two, I guess it's two components to a single project. I guess so having a, having a entrance on Old Dutch Road hold up ruling on a loading dock on the east side, is it-
We could probably split them up, can't we?
I mean, I know we have to go to county tomorrow.
I think we can.
Yeah, you still have county to go.
Yeah.
Could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
You'd, you'd like to get your project going and put in the loading dock to satisfy the primary need, is that what you're saying? Is that correct?
More or less, yes.
And, and maybe debate on this parking area can continue as kind of a sidebar. But I was just curious, do you need a variance for the 80-foot setback to the parking area? Has that been mentioned to you, or how, how is it proposed to be handled?
So, there's a caveat in the zoning code that we found, and we met with, with Wes and with Kim Cincella about this previously, before any of this planning board stuff started. The caveat being that the planning board can approve set, uh, frontage setbacks in this zone, as long as you can determine that there will be no future road widening. Or, I, I don't remember what the other component of it was, but it sounded like the agreeance was that it could be handled at planning board level. Wes, do you remember the language on that?
That's about right, I don't remember the specific provision of the code, but I think you kind of hit the nail on the head there. The planning board has the ability to reduce the required front parking setback if there's no need for future road widening.
So, was it kind of a waiver type of thing?
That's exactly, yeah, that's kind of exactly it. Doesn't, they, he doesn't need to go to the ZBA for that, is my understanding.
I just, I just had one other comment which relates to the stormwater.
Sure.
And the, the apparent overdesign that you referred to done in 2000 and the Aronacote Creek watershed pamphlet that goes back to that date. That's, that's nice that it goes back to 2000, but the drainage regulations have changed a lot since then. And the, the ICW regs, you know, kind of make you do a stormwater pollution prevention plan even for a small project such as this. But there's a whole stormwater treatment component that should probably be considered in addition to the, in addition to the stormwater control in terms of throttling the stormwater, as the ponds typically do. There's now in 2022 quite a, quite a bit of information relating to stormwater treatment. I guess I would yield to the town engineer in what really needs to go in there to be in conformance with that aspect of things.
Yeah, so we are taking a look at the information that the applicant provided, we just got that. There's a little hiccup in the information arriving to our office, but that is in front of Mary to review. Yep. And I think, I think it's a valid point, and, and I did mention that to Mary as well, so.
Yeah, I think, although the ICW came out in about 2000, and this pond was evidently built in around 2000, the drainage rigs haven't been static since then, they've been very dynamic. So, you're, you're kind of locked into that. And, and I know that it's not always a popular thing to do, it involves a lot of sometimes additional work. But anyway, I yield to town engineer on that one. Will they have to come back?
Yeah, they, they need to come back, we can't take action tonight, since they're at the county, I guess tomorrow night. So, they'll be back at the next meeting. Unless you have, I mean, if you have any instructions for the applicant, otherwise, now would be the time to let them know.
When they come back, do we want to see a new architectural elevation, if they have one, to show us? You, you said there was some non-compatibility between-
Yeah, so Mark Kukufka put together a letter, and I can, we can send that back out to the planning board members here. It's dated August 16th, it talks about, for example, recommended windows and doors detailing which reflects the form and function of meaningful architectural design. And on the elevations that were provided to the planning board, there appear to be no, there appears to be no articulation to the doors and windows. And, you know, the applicant's kind of contending that, well, they don't know who their tenant's going to be yet, so they don't want to put the detail in the architecture at this point in time.
So, is it best to just wait on that?
Well, they've got, I think they've got an approved, not an approved building permit, but a, some form of design on that side, on, in both areas internally. but some form of design on that side, in both areas internally.
Internally, yes. Nothing to do, nothing to do with the West Side. I know that's really the point of contention here at the board. The east side, the loading docks, that, I mean, just the timeframe to actually complete that work to get the tenants in that are known is the critical path that we're really trying to get through.
So then, maybe if we don't need to take action on the Westerly parking lot and want to take action on the Easterly loading dock, maybe we don't really need that, I guess.
I agree. See any problem with that?
I think that's one alternative. I don't know how the applicant feels about that, you know, approving a portion of the site plan that's your critical path.
We could call that Phase 1.
Yeah, do it in phases.
I can't say I've done one like that before, but I suppose we could.
There's time for everything.
It's certainly a conversation to be had with the owner, but-
I understand where you're coming from. You don't want to detail design something if it's not going to suit the future client whom you evidently aren't certain of.
We are not, yeah. We had a lead on one, and they did not, they backed out, so.
All right, any comments from the public? We do have one on the YouTube. Suzie, what was that?
Okay, it's one resident with a few comments. It's Amy Bartel. She lives at 54 Bosworth Field, Mendon, which is adjacent to Old Dutch Road. She says vehicle traffic will add noise impacts and is better positioned on the east side of the existing building. If they are subdividing, they can adjust the interior spaces to allow east side access. Also, large evergreen trees should be required to screen the entire building from Old Dutch. All of us on Bosworth Field see that building in our backyards. Deciduous trees are not effective. And lastly, we also need specifics about activities will be done at that location. Our residential neighbors hear truck, HVAC, and generator noise from the existing facilities, which isn't screened properly. That's it.
Okay. Take that under advisement, if you would.
Sure.
Anything else, Suzie? Okay, well, you'll be back.
Thank you, thank you, board.
Next is the final subdivision for Fairways Phase 3 re-subdivision of lots 304, 313, and 314. This is 05 FS 2022, Championship Drive, Zone Residential 1. The owner is Fairview Ponds LLC, tax map number 6.20-1-300.000. Applicant is requesting approval for re-subdivision of lots 304, 313, and 314 into 11 individual townhomes. Go ahead.
Evening, board. Thank you for taking the time to meet with us tonight. We're here for the final subdivision for Fairways. Pretty routine. We've gone through a couple of these before, so if there's any questions, I'd like to open it up to those.
Do you have your name?
Trevor Howt with Passaro Associates.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board, comments?
I have a question. This is where you have, you have done the townhouses, and then you go out and then you resurvey the townhouses after they're built to establish the property lines exactly. Is that correct? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Very common.
Yeah, well, now that we've done it a few times, it's common. Okay, I just want to make sure I understood what you're doing. I'm okay.
Anybody else? Wes?
So we did take a look at this project. We really have no substantive comments on the re-subdivision. So seeker had been previously completed, so we're all set.
Okay. I guess we have to close the public hearing, right?
No, it's final.
It's final, okay. And I've got a resolution here for the Fairways Phase 3 Championship Drive, 9/13/22, application number 05 FS 2022. Whereas the planning board made the following findings effect, and there are three, now therefore it be resolved that the final subdivision application of the Fairways Townhomes LLC final subdivision entitled lots 304, 313, and 314 of the Fairways Phase 3, drawn by Passaro Associates, drawing number 20203040.1.0001, dated July 2022, received by the Planning Board Secretary, August 9, 2022. Planning Board application number 05 FS 2022 be approved the following conditions, conditions that must be met prior to the chairman signing the final subdivision plan. One, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid as per fee reimbursement local law adopted in November 25, 1996. Two, that before the Planning Board Chairman signs the approved film originals, the developer should submit two copies of electronic files to the town. Copies of electronic files shall be forwarded to the town engineer to confirm that the data on the electronic files is the same as the approved subdivision plans. Three, that Section 4 standard approval conditions for all subdivisions, major and minor of the design and construction standards be met. Four, that the comments from Lobella Associates dated August 13, 2022 be addressed. Five, that the subdivision which was approved on May 22, 2007 be modified, and the application of the Fairways Townhouses LLC dated June 7, 2022, for a modification of the approved subdivision be granted, provided that the developer comply with all conditions stated in the prior final subdivision approval dated May 22, 2007, and further complies with the requirements herein. Conditions that are ongoing, standard conditions that must be adhered to. One, that the final subdivision complies with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section 4. Two, that approved subdivision maps, including conservation easements, lot consolidations, and lot line adjustments shall be submitted in digital format, AutoCAD 2002 or latest version, effective January 1, 2004, per Town Board Resolution 193 of June 23, 2003. Three, that in the event that created lot line, the created lot lines do not coincide with the constructed buildings, an administrative lot line adjustment is possible, providing all regulations are complied with. And be further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. Motion?
I'll move it.
Scott moves it.
I'll second.
Joe seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You're done.
Thank you.
Next is a public hearing. This is the Brush Solar Array, 21 SB 22. It's at 8045 County Road 41, Zone Residential 2, tax map number 38.000-1-1.210. Applicant is requesting approval to install a 71.2 kilowatt solar photovoltaic system, including trenching and installation of underground circuit conduit. Have comments? Lobella, we have those yet?
We haven't provided comments on this project, no.
Thanks. And a comment from Code is this needs a decommissioning plan.
Okay, good evening, board. Thank you for having us here. My name is Jay Ditis. I'm with Fusion Energy Services, representing the owner, James Brush, on this project. Did receive an email today for decommissioning plan, so that has been submitted, along with an updated property setback map as well. So that decommissioning plan is in your possession.
I'm advised that we have it.
I'm sorry?
Advised that we have it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions at all on the project at this point in time?
No, are there? Joe, anything?
I was just rushing, going through your decommissioning plan. Is this something that there's a financial commitment by the owner to, or is this something more as a policy requirement, I guess? Not familiar with it.
So most residential style applications for solar don't require a decommissioning plan. This is a little different for the Town of Victor, because you designate residential versus commercial, or large scale versus small scale. So because it's over 25 KW, it is considered by the Town of Victor that it's a large-scale solar project. So this is kind of a little off for us in that we don't typically have a decommissioning plan. We typically design our systems for, to stay in service as long as possible. So at this point, for this one, we pulled out one of our, kind of our standard decommissioning plans for a megawatt solar project that you'd see like a solar farm field. The homeowner's been made aware of the potential cost for removal down the road if they choose to decommission it. My hope is that it never has to be decommissioned, as my job is to try to provide a renewable source for the long haul, but there are conditions in place at this point to remove that if the homeowner decides, or if he moves and the next homeowner comes in and wants to remove the project.
Okay, so that's not considered something under, where you're taking out a, sorry, a set of panels and replacing them, this is actually removing it from the site?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, bringing it back to the original condition.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And just to add to that, if you don't mind, the racking system that we're using, I do have an example if you want to see it. It's a very minimally invasive racking system. We're not using any cement or-
You're not socketing in the ground with concrete foundations? This was, as I was looking at it anchored and just setting on the ground, it's adjusted for it, yeah.
There's a flat plate that sits on, and there's an earth anchor that goes in. It could actually be pulled out by a hand jack to be removed down the road.
Okay. No, that's fine. Thank you.
Wind isn't going to blow it away, is it?
Sorry?
Wind isn't going to blow it away, is it?
No, sir, no, sir.
They did provide a detail for anchors, so I'm assuming that that's actually anchored into the ground.
Should be a detail for anchors. We did submit that in initial plan, shows the length. If you'd like to see an example, I brought one in the back of the room. I can bring it to you just to see it, if you'd like.
What is it?
Let me grab it for you.
No, he, full scale.
This is an actual footplate that you would see on the bottom of the ground. And this is the actual earth anchor that you put in the ground, driven down by a rod about six feet in depth, either by hammer drills and/or by a post hole digger, if you're the unfortunate person that does not have the hammer drill. And then this is attached to a pullout anchor with a scale, and it's jacked out to a certain tension to make sure that it won't blow over in a high windstorm. So we're trying to achieve approximately 900 foot pounds of pullout strength in the front, and about 1,200 foot pounds in the rear of the solar arrays. This would be the piece that anchors this down. You can see these four squares right here, goes through this section right here, and this washer goes down to lock it in place. And if you want to remove it down the road, you just jack it, you jack it, you put the same jack you put it in, test the pullout strength, and you jack it out of the ground.
No problems at Halloween time.
Excuse me?
No problems at Halloween time.
No, sir. Not here. It's pretty far off the property line, so shouldn't be any-
Kids have a way.
I did have a question. So this is a 71 kilowatt hour solution. Is that typical for a residential house? Is it greater than? I mean, what, we're probably going to start seeing more of these, so this would be a good little education, or at least me anyways, to say, is this a typical residential? Is it greater than a typical residential? Can you frame that?
Sure. This is a little bit bigger than a typical residential. When I first started about 10 years ago, we were seeing people put in around two to five KW style systems. As time's advanced, people are actually using more and more electronics, cars are switching to electric. People are being pushed to use heat pumps in their homes, which is taking the reliance off fossil fuels and more toward electric. So people's energy usage is going up. And now we're seeing, probably the average is around 20 to 30 KW is what we're seeing. And Iserda caps their rebate program at 25 KW residentially.
Well, this is like more than 3X than a typical installation?
Yeah, yep.
Almost 4X, so what?
This is, this is a bigger house, and the house is heated by geothermal heating and cooling, so it's not using fossil fuels at this facility, but because, you know, it's got multiple heat pumps in those locations, it's using more electricity.
And is there any selling back to the grid of electricity generated, proposed in this solution, or is it all consumed on-site?
This one will be all consumed on-site.
Is there battery storage?
There is no battery storage in this one.
Do you use it or lose it on a daily basis? Is that kind of how it works?
That's a great question. What actually happens, especially in the summertime, most homeowners will overproduce what they're using, because the sun is higher and the daylight's longer, so that will, it will just gather more energy. So what happens is the utility company comes in and they install what's called a bidirectional meter. So it reads both incoming and outgoing power. Actually, the excess generation, that's called, is sent back out to the grid. The utility meter records that, and it just, it registers a credit on their bill. The power then goes, the extra power goes out to the grid and is passed on down to the neighbors. So then at nighttime, or in the wintertime, when there's snow on the ground, or the daylight's short, and they're using more power than what they're using, they go back through that credit to even themselves out. This one here is going to be, it might be slightly undersized for what he's using in his home, so he'll probably, this won't cover 100% of what he's utilizing at the home. We're trying to get as close as we can. The next phase of the project is try to do energy reduction in his home. So we're going to be tracking how much power he's using, what equipment's using the power, and we're trying to reduce his electric consumption, to try to get it into the position where the solar can handle almost all of it.
That flyer we all got in the mail yesterday or the day before, wanting us to sign up. You familiar with that at all?
I'm not, no.
Was that for a public access utility type of wind farm?
You signed it up. All you do is sign up, and I don't know how it works other than that, but-
So this is one that they're installing as a private residence? That one's-
And Al asked if it's going, any of it's going on the grid, and apparently not.
Right.
I got this flyer, I wondered, where is it coming from? Because I don't know of any big solar farms in Victor.
Well, a lot of, a lot of those places, those community solar projects, well, it doesn't have to be in the town specifically, it has to be within a grid area of that specific utility grid. So there's zone maps that it could be a few towns away, and if they have excess generation, they try to sell it to customers in different communities, just to make sure they have a customer for the power that they're producing.
Love to talk to them tomorrow.
Good luck. If you have any questions, you have my contact information. I'll do what I can to help you.
All right, we do have a letter.
I guess I just had a question. You have another photo there, I think it's a photo simulation of the units installed on the property. If you could just call it up, I was curious to know if there's any visual impact from what's going on there to the neighbors. There's another, I saw it up there a minute ago. That one, whoa.
Yep.
So that's a simulation of what it's going to look like approximately?
Yeah, so if I may, if you can hear me over here.
There's a mic.
Yeah, you can take, there's a hand mic you can carry with you. Because no, the recording will not hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
The neighbor's home is actually over here, approximately in this area, and this is the neighbor's solar array right here, this, in this spot. It's hard to tell by this photograph, but the, where the solar array is up here is actually in a depression, so it's sitting down quite low. The homeowner specifically wanted to make sure that he could not see the solar array as little as possible, along with the neighbor. So the neighbor is going to have this tree line here, and you can kind of see those trees right up there, right in front of the solar array, that are going to block it. Plus, it's down a good, the depression's probably about 15 feet deep. And the top of the solar panels is nine foot, eight inches, I believe, approximately. So the photograph doesn't do it justice, but it will be sitting low on the property and very difficult to see.
So the solar panels that we see there, closest to us, those are already existing, and they belong to the neighbor? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And the blue rectangles closer to the top, under the word "array"?
That's correct.
That's where, that's where these are going, particularly to this owner.
Yeah, those are the proposed solar location right there, and these are the existing for the neighbor.
Okay, thank you. Most helpful.
Just one quick last question, and what's, in today's economic environment, what's a typical payback period of this type of installation?
If you had a specific cash outlay, it's anywhere from three to seven years. It all depends on what your utility rate is. A year ago, most people's utility rates that we were seeing on average was around nine cents a kilowatt hour, which made the payback up near seven. We are seeing people with 13, 14, and even 16 cents per kilowatt hour. The higher that kilowatt hour rate goes up, the faster your payback period is on the solar installation. The state has actually come out with a loan program specifically for people, residential applications here in New York State, where it's a no-money-out-of-pocket application. And I would say more than nine out of 10 homes we do, it's a no-money-out-of-pocket option, so they're- so they're making a monthly payment to the state, and that monthly payment comes out less per month than what they're currently paying with the utility bills. So in that situation, there's an argument for instant payback.
Well, unless I have to pay it back over 30 years like a mortgage, and then...
Yes, exactly, exactly. But the goal is with that state-sponsored loan, is that the loan stays open for 15 years, you're locking in your rate so that you know what your fixed, your fixture costs, and then it's usually less expensive than what you're currently paying with the utility provider, so...
So the taxpayers are subsidizing it, in other words, then?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to be clear on the record there.
And the people who buy it are also paying the interest on it, so they're paying back the taxpayers as well.
So our three to five years is kind of a planning number right now?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is an email we got from Robert and Karen Mayo at 8035 Fountain Hill Road. Says, "We hereby confirm that we are in full support of the installation of a 71.2 kilowatt solar photovoltaic system, including trenching and installation of an underground electrical conduit at 8045 Fountain Hill Road in Victor." For the record.
Thank you.
Is that theirs, that's showing?
I believe it is, yes.
Yes. Okay. Was there a public hearing on this?
Yeah.
All right, then, have a motion to close the public hearing?
Did we ask for a public comment yet?
Oh, any public comments? Well, I read one. Okay, that was it?
Motion to close public hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we have a resolution, for the brush solar array, 8045 County Road 41, today's date, 9/13/22, application number 21SP 2022, whereas the planning board made the following findings a fact, and there are seven, whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on September 13, 2022, and identify no significant impacts, now therefore be it resolved that the project, brush solar array, will not have a significant impact on the environment, and that a negative declaration be prepared. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of JDAS of Fusion Energy Services Site Plan entitled Brush Solar Array received by the Planning Board August 9, 2022, Planning Board Application Number 21SP 2022, be approved the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan, one, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid, as per fee reimbursement local law adopted November 25, November 25, 1996. Two, that the comments in the letter dated September 13, 2022, from Lobella Associates be addressed.
I meant to leave that date empty, because Wes doesn't have a comment.
Yeah, you can, you can just strike that paragraph from the resolution.
And that would be number seven on the front, too.
Strike number two?
Mm-hmm.
And Wes, seven?
Number seven.
Seven?
Yep.
Do we need that before we can approve this?
No, you don't need, you don't need Lobella.
Okay. That comments from code enforcement officer dated August 31, 2022, be addressed. Ongoing conditions that the site plan complied with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section 4. Two, that a building permit be obtained before the start of construction, and be further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
That moves, second?
I'll second.
Show seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
You're good?
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Be getting the letter.
Every evening.
Take it with you, please.
You pass it over to Lisa for me.
Oh, thank you.
Next is Victor CDR and Jeep Car Wash, 6484 State Route 96, 22SP 2022, Zone Commercial/Light Industrial, owner is Victor East Holding Company, tax map number 28.12-1-36.100. Applicant is requesting to approve, approval to install a 1,880 square foot external car wash to replace the internal car wash stations that were approved for the new commercial building. Staff comments here, the applicant indicated that the car wash will be for customers only, therefore a special use permit is not needed. And we were waiting for Lobella, do we, do we have anything, Wes?
Also at county.
Oh, it's the county anyway, all right.
So, I do have one, at least preliminary comment, and then I can also just introduce you to the architectural comments as well from Lobella. So, and I think probably the applicant knows this already, but pump station seven currently cannot accommodate flows from the proposed car wash. We have designed a, some improvements to pump station seven, and the project has gone out to bid, so we would expect that, once the pump station does get rebuilt, that it would have capacity for the car wash, but it just currently, today, does not. And then the architectural comments, I think, it's just noticeably, the proposed structure is noticeably different from what is being built out there today. So, I'll let you, I'll let you read those comments.
Good evening, Board, Trevor Howt with Pastor Row Associates. I'm here to introduce the proposed site plan modification at Victor Jeep dealership. We worked with Wes to get these plans signed in May of 2021. At that point, the car wash and the hydraulic demand was going to come from inside the building, we're moving that outside the building, based on some input from the client and their needs. So, there's no additional impervious area being proposed, we're just swapping out asphalt for buildings, so there's no additional impact on stormwater. There are 10 parking spots that are going to be lost, so we're going to go from 406 total to 396, which is far above the 306 that are required. We maintain our 500 feet separation from residential structures. So, we're here to get our site plan modification process started, and to take any questions and concerns, and we're waiting for a formal comment letter from Wes and Lobella.
So you have one inside the building now?
Initially, that was the plan, was to do the washing inside the building, so...
Nothing there yet, though?
Our pump, our private pump station and oil water separator was all sized for that capacity, so the plan is to move that service outside the building and have a dedicated laser wash bays to, you know, increase the ability to service the vehicles and, you know, just have that separation, and, you know, I'm sure everyone's been to a dealership.
My question is, is there a car wash in there now?
It's not built yet, so it's...
Trevor, if I may?
Yeah.
Matt Indiana from Victor East Auto Group and Victor East Holding Co., LLC. Chairman, the, we do not have a wash machine inside, what we have is bays for hand washing vehicles, and what we've done is some research between the time that we've, you know, have gotten the dealership going until, until now, seeing with other, seeing what other dealerships have done, it's more efficient and more effective to have an actual machine. Most of the studies show that they use much less water, so we were looking at, instead of having somebody hand washing each vehicle, and sometimes there's the propensity to have water running, and using too much water, we've seen that the machines are more efficient in actually cleaning the vehicles. On top of that, we can also then implement a water reclamation system as part of the car wash, so that we'd be using even less water. We are very cognizant of pump station number seven, being that we are at the lowest point, and we never want to, you know, have a problem with that, because I think we would pay the worst of anybody, so, with that being said, we're trying to help the situation as opposed to make it worse. We have also spoken with the superintendent in Farmington, who I believe they maintain the system, and I think if we can get, I don't know if the, the board would be open if they agreed that this reclamation system, as well as the automated machine being more efficient, perhaps we can go from there?
What do you think, Wes?
Yeah, I can talk to our sanitary engineers to look at the flows that are going to be reclaimed, and, and figure out whether that would at all help the case.
I'd like to make things better for the pump station as opposed to make it worse, by all means.
Yeah, yeah.
What is, so what is the status of their project then, Wes, in going forward, if this gets okayed, can they build the wash but not use it until such time as the pump station is upgraded, or how does that work?
I guess if we, if we knew that the flows were going to exceed what the pump station could accommodate, then I think we would recommend, I guess, I guess you could, I guess the planning board could approve a site plan, and then, but a certificate of occupancy might be held up until such time that there's confirmation that the pump station can accommodate the flows.
Well, right now, with what we've approved so far, did, did we approve them to...
We did, so I think, I think that the flows, the engineering report that we got previously for the Victor Jeep dealership, they, those flows could be accommodated.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if you can stay at those flows or under, as you're saying, perhaps you can?
Our intent would be to stay there or under, we would like to make it better.
Then, then I guess there wouldn't be an issue.
So then, yeah, then maybe it wouldn't be an issue, right?
Okay. Are these guys coming back, too?
Yeah, there's, we have county, are you going to the county Monday? Tomorrow, Wednesday.
Have they submitted updated flows to you then, Wes, at this point, or is that pending?
I don't know if we have anything more current than what you provided for the previous dealership. We have the plan set, were there updated flows provided?
I don't know, Trevor, if there was.
Being that we're moving the operations...
Step up to the mic.
Excuse me. Being that the intent is to move the washing operations from inside the building to outside the building, there's no net increase in the flow, that we didn't provide an updated engineer's report.
Okay.
We can't, we can't, though, but since there's a net...
Maybe a letter stating that fact is all you need?
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, that would be helpful, if you could provide something to the town, and they can distribute it to Lobella, you know, just indicating that the anticipated flows are going to be the same, just something to substantiate that, or less.
Or less would be, be interested, interesting to see how that is achieved.
We can supply a letterhead that is an amendment to the engineer's report.
May want to talk to the reclamation, if that's the case, if that's part of your design?
Yep, exactly.
Matt and I will work together on putting that letter together.
We'll do that.
And just a question, you are proposing a two-bay solution, I'm just curious why you would need that kind of capacity?
Mr. Glina, the only reason we'd ask that, to have that capacity, is that right now we can't find anybody to wash them by hand, and essentially what would happen is when somebody comes in for a, for an oil change, or any service, we like to provide a clean car when they leave, and the only reason we went from one to two is, as opposed to having that stacking and having the one machine going constantly, having two would give you the ability to get somebody back to work on time, as opposed to waiting for the car wash.
What about that car washed down the road?
It's, we, we, we're currently using both Go and the new one down the road, but quite frankly, at $25 a wash, it's not, it's not economic for us, you know, economically feasible for us to do that, on top of the fact that we're taking somebody's car off the premise, relying on a porter, or somebody like that, to bring it to that station and bring it back, and we don't find that to be a, a good option.
And this is just going to be relative to your business, this isn't a public...
No, sir, this is for our customers.
And you noticed that you had room for a third bay, like a future expansion, is that something that you're serious about, or you just sort of...
No, no, it's two bays, they're, they're not the cheapest systems in the world, the one, what we're looking at is the Simonize system, and once again, the water reclamation system alone is very pricey.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll see you next time.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, Board.
And next is Campos Outdoor Spa, 213 Royal View in Pittsburgh, 24SP 2022, it's owned limited development district, that's why it's here. Owner is David Campos, tax map 5.01-1-25.012. Applicant is requesting approval to install a 10-foot by 16-foot outdoor spa, which includes an expansion of an existing patio and renovation and installment of landscape beds. There's... That's it.
Evening, folks, Andrew Murphy here with RPK Landscape Architecture, representing the homeowners at 213 Royal View. I think that summarizes the project pretty well, again, main component would be in the installation of the 10-by-16 spa, number two, the expansion of an existing bluestone patio to accommodate the use for the spa, and then assorted landscape amenities being number three, screening plantings, foundation planting update, full, full planting renovation. So, you've got the plans, there were a couple photographs that I provided, an aerial image, really just to show the character of the neighborhood, and also that there, I believe, are two or maybe three other swimming pools in, you know, in the immediate neighborhood, and then the photographs should show, I think, just that, that no views would be changed on and off the site. That's looking, that's basically standing where the spa would be located, looking south towards the back property line, so, and then looking west, towards the side property line there, again, from the view of the proposed spa. That's, that's the project in a nutshell, I'm happy to field any questions regarding the proposal.
I don't have an overhead view showing all those swimming pools. You, anybody else?
The adjoining swimming pools, the neighbors?
I see, and then...
I think...
A bunch of photos.
Yeah, that image might have gotten cut off a little bit, there's one in the south, southwest corner, and then, if I were to be in Google Earth and zoom out, just another couple houses, there'd be another one in the north, northeast corner, also on Royal View. Apologize for the image.
There's one right next door to you at Reagan's?
Oh, yes, yes, thank you, yeah, right next door to the west, west of 213.
And also, Carrier, Myra Carrier, she has a big pool in the back. Ernie, this is really before, it's because it's limited development district, and as long as the neighbors don't object, then it fits on a lot.
We had anything from the neighbors?
No.
Have you spoken with your neighbors that you're planning on doing this, or...
I'm going to refer real quickly to Mr. Campos.
Yeah, I can't wait.
And just wait till they don't get it.
When the neighbors have a pool, they're the ones that are the favorites, people go and swim, so, it's like a nice spa. I have no problems with it.
Yeah, I don't have any questions or concerns, Ernie.
I don't either.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, Scott.
So, so I'm looking at your wastewater system, your leash lines that you have shown on here, and I see you have things very, very tight to that system, in particular, distribution box in the first line, and I'm, I don't know if the town engineer has commented on this, but in terms of serviceability, based on having done a few of these, it seems to me you're really tight, I wonder if there can be some adjustments made, so you could service that, for example, the most, the line closest to the fence, the red line. For example, the most, the line closest to the fence, the red line, looks like it's about two feet away, if that line, assuming this is plotted correctly, if you ever needed to repair that line or do whatever, I don't know any machine that would really get in there to be able to do that. So I guess I would, again, yield to the town engineer, take a look at it, and see if they see it the way I see it, and if some sort of adjustment could or should be made so that there's not a problem between that utility and the construction.
Scott, I think that's a good question or a good observation, right? We did take a brief look at this plan. I didn't have a septic person take a look, however, but I would agree with that, you know, statement or that concern. I don't know if the property owner has any concerns in that regard, right? The potential impact to your leach lines here and your septic system. I mean, I could, if you'd like me to get some additional comments from somebody that's more familiar with wastewater than I am, I can do that.
It's something that we have noted, and we've discussed with the property owner and landscape contractor, pool builder. We, in terms of relocating or trying to stay as far as possible away from the leach line, that's something that we've vetted out pretty thoroughly and schematic. Things are very tight as they are proposed right now, just allowing the spa and then four feet of pool deck essentially on either side of that. And I think at this point, it's, it is, you know, during excavation, it would be something that they would be hand digging around the distribution box and against that closest leach line. So again, during construction, they're going to be taking the precautions, and to Mr. Harder's point about maintenance, the septic distribution box will just be covered with light landscape treatment, and then the leach line, again, that's closest to that pool deck, it is close. It's within, you know, it's within three feet of the fence, the proposed fence, and I think that's just something that the homeowner has recognized and is, they've recognized that, they've recognized that it is close, and it could be an issue in the future, but while it's not a, while it's not a common installation, it is something that the pool contractor and the landscape contractor have dealt with before, working that close to the leach field, a leach field.
So Scott, code enforcement officer Rick McGrane did comment on the same thing. He said in his letter, "The proposed area of construction located very close to the septic system leach field. Recommended distance away from the leach field for construction is 10 feet."
Right.
"This is only a recommendation and not a law," or I'm assuming he means code. "I recommend using caution during construction as to not cause any damage to the leach lines," which is what your applicant is expressing, so they're aware of it. It's only going to hurt them if they damage it.
Is there a, is there a foundation or a footing that goes around the area that you're showing the improvement for, and is that...
Other than the pool, the pool wall, no. You know, the pool deck on either side of that is going to be your typical concrete paver and crushed stone base. But, yeah, the pool wall's the most...
The reason I ask is if there's trenching near an existing leach line, and there's, for example, stone that goes along with that footing, that's one reason why the 10-foot separation rule exists, because it can short circuit what you're putting in there. I mean, you know, I think, I don't see where the septic tank is on this one. I see a distribution box. I'm wondering where the septic tank is, but...
I wonder if that's the septic tank. That's what they label this distro box, I guess.
Yeah. I don't know, I'm just, I'm flagging that as an issue, because I think you have an opportunity when you're under construction to take care of the situation. I mean, as I see it, what you could do is simply take the top line and relocate it bottom, make it one, make it a final leach line, then, if there's room to do that.
Abandoning that one line, for instance?
Abandon that one where it is, and just put one at the end, and then you wouldn't have that close proximity and that possible maintenance issue. There are many stories out there about pool companies and leach lines. I won't bore you with those stories tonight, but...
They don't end well.
They actually all end about the same way.
Yeah.
So I'm flagging that issue for you, so we go.
Appreciate the comments, and that's something, actually, that we had not considered, is abandoning the top line and adding in another to the south.
Hunter Farmington has a really good story to tell you sometime about that.
So if that's a septic tank, and you have, it looks like you're either planting new plantings or eliminating some plantings in the area of that, the first distribution box from the septic tank, I mean, isn't that going to foul the leach lines, or hasn't that been fouling the leach lines? That one, anyway, that Scott's suggesting abandoning, maybe you should better off be abandoning that, anyway, and putting an extension on the system. Which there's usually in a septic design, there's usually a combination for that, saying if you want to add another one, I mean, here's where to do it. I guess that goes in Scott's conversation, you know, discussion, too, so, yeah, I would consider that a good idea.
Thank you.
I think it'd be great. I mean, it would be a good idea to do that. I don't know if we, you know, if the code enforcement doesn't flag it as a code item, then I guess I don't see how we do either, but I think in terms of best practices, absolutely.
I mean, it's a health situation, if you think about it, so...
Yeah, I mean...
It's leach lines of septic liquid, so...
It could make the pool party not so much fun.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, a real downer right there.
Neighbors might not want to come over, then.
Float a lot better that way.
I guess we pretty much covered that one.
Does he have any comments? He's the only one out there right now. No, no, this David. We do have a resolution, should have a motion to close the public hearing, I suppose.
Joe moved.
Joe moves.
Second.
I'll second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. We do have a resolution for the Campos Outdoor Spa, 213 Royal View, Pittsburgh, dated today's date, 9/13/22, application number 24 SP 2022. Whereas the Planning Board made the filings a fact, and there are six. The Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on September 13, 2022, and identified no significant impacts. Now therefore be it resolved that the project Campos Outdoor Spa will not have a significant impact on the environment, and that a negative declaration be prepared. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of Andrew Murphy, RPK Landscape Architects, site plan entitled Campos Outdoor Spa, located in the Limited Development District drawn by RPK Landscape Architects, dated August 24, 2022, received by the Planning Board August 24, 2022, last revised September 8, 2022, Planning Board application number 24 SP 2022, be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan. One, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid as per fee reimbursement local law adopted in November 25, 1996. Ongoing conditions. One, that the site plan comply with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section 4. Two, should an underground stream be encountered during construction, the developer is to address the encroachment and impact to the underground stream to the satisfaction of the town engineer. And I guess that includes sewage going into that underground stream as well. Three, that a building permit be obtained for the pool prior to installation, and be further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. Do we have a motion?
Move it.
Scott moves it. Second?
I'll second.
I'll second, so all in favor?
Aye.
We have one last item.
Girl's head.
Thank you.
Can't go?
No. It's for an extension of time for Highland Park PDD, 30 SP 2021, Main Street Fishers. Owner is Morale Builders, tax map 6.00-1-58.320. Applicant received approval on December 14, 2021, to construct 120 apartment-style and 26 townhome-style four-rant residential units with supporting clubhouse amenities and parking. Applicant is requesting their second 90-day extension of this approval. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll move. Second?
I'll second.
Scott, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Here's the resolution for Highland Park, Highline Park PDD, Main Street Fishers, date 9/13/22, application number 30 SP 2022. Whereas in a letter dated August 29, 2022, Marathon Engineering requested a 90-day extension of time for application titled Highland, Highline Park PDD. Therefore be it resolved that the Town of Victor Planning Board grants the second 90-day extension of time for Highline Park PDD. Motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Who's that?
Me.
Joe moves.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, 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 aye.
Through the audience's eyes.
Hi, Dave.
So what happens?